Sorry, and exit through the rear doors and go into the car park. That's all I have at the moment. Apologies for absences.
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from councillor Hill and councillor Woods.
Thank you. Is there any declaration of members' interests that anybody needs to raise? Councillor Kay?
As a deferred active member of their pension fund.
Thank you. Joe?
I'm an active member too.
And I am an active member as well.
Still got a question? Thank you. Before we go on to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, I just want to give you an update. Councillor Hill raised a question alongside me with the changes that the government are putting in place on pension schemes. So I was asked to raise the issue of these changes with Border to Coast, and I have approached them by email. And I expect to raise the question in the meetings that I have with Border to Coast next week. I don't have any more information for you than that at the moment, other than that the bill itself is going through the committee change, and some amendments to it have been proposed but not approved yet. Thank you. Looking at the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 10th of July, is everybody okay with them or? We'll move on to item four, the independent advisers market update report.
Thank you, Chair. My report is in the pack. As a reminder, this is some commentary on the current state of investment markets, what's been going on. What it's not intended to do is look at scheme performance or our own asset allocation. We'll pick that up later on the agenda. Very happy to take questions as we go. I was going to concentrate most of my comments on the market performance table. I say if there are any questions, please do ask, but it could be some of the questions are best picked up later on in the agenda. But so please do ask them as and when you think is suitable. In terms of the table itself, just for clarity, this is the Q2 calendar performance table. So it's 31st of March through to the end of June. Obviously, listing a number of different investment markets on the table, I've highlighted a few in red. Just the ones in red are those I thought were more interesting, so I'll make some direct comments on those. But as a scheme, we've got exposure to probably every single line item on there in inbearing proportion. So the first line there is the FTSE All Share, which is a good representation of UK equities. In terms of global world equities, the UK now represents about 4% of the world. Obviously, it's more important for our scheme, and so we'll pick that up later on when we look at our scheme allocation. We've had strong returns over all periods there. Q2 was up 4.4%. Obviously, look longer term, some very positive numbers there as well, three years up 10.66% per annum. Clearly, positive returns on equity is going to help the asset portfolio of the scheme and the overall funding. So FTSE All Share represents a UK equity element. MSCI AC world is actually all countries world, so that represents global equities. So essentially, the investment opportunity set if you invest globally. And all countries, AC just means developed and emerging markets. You've got quite a broad representation of opportunities. You can see there, again, the kind of strong performance in the quarter, up 5.2%. Not quite so strong year-to-date. That's because obviously the first quarter was quite weak. We'll talk about that in a moment. But over the longer term, particularly over five and 10 years, you see again the very strong performance. And indeed, over 10 years, up just over 12% per annum, again, very supportive to the asset portfolio within the scheme. And indeed, that's almost double what we saw in UK equities, which is up about 6.8% over 10 years. What's driven the global equities in particular is North America. So North America represents the US and Canada, but the US is by far the greatest proportion of that. And the US now represents about 70% of global equities. So what goes on in the North America line here in in red obviously is a big determinant of world equities. So you see there the North America line there, the red line, first one is strong performance in the quarter, up 5%. That's despite a number of issues, including Liberation Day, so President Trump announcement in in early April, caused a number of uncertainties to markets, but they did recover over the rest of the quarter. Year-to-date is actually slightly negative, down just over 2%. And in particular, that obviously represents the poor performance in Q1. And some of that was really driven by some announcements from China on Deep Seek in terms of their AI model. And that impacted some of the larger stocks within the US. But longer term, five and 10 years, again, you see the very strong performance from from US equities. Indeed, 10 years there, nearly 15%. One thing I did want to draw out is kind of the effect of currencies. So what's happening not only within equity markets but also in in currency markets. So what we've seen in the second quarter is a weakening of the US dollar. So you see there the line that says FTSE North America Local. So the North American Local is the return you would get if you were a dollar investor. So you see there the kind of far stronger return in the second quarter, up just over 11% compared to the 5% return above that. And that's because essentially there's kind of around about a 7% loss for a sterling investor into dollars. Now, there is the option of doing something called currency hedging. So you can take out some of that currency volatility by buying protection against currency movements. It means within growth investors, there are there are different approaches. I mean, quite a few investors won't hedge currency within equities. And the argument there is because of equity markets themselves are quite volatile. Currency adds that volatility, but it's just another component of volatility. So there's a small cost to currency hedging, and it creates volatility but wouldn't necessarily create a longer, a stronger long-term return. So a lot of investors, when they go global, particularly in equities, won't currency hedge. But there's been quite a material impact in this quarter as a result of currency. So whether investors chose to hedge the currency or not was a was a big driver of overall returns. And we'll cover that later on, but we don't currency hedge the equity portfolio. So we'll pick that up later on in the agenda. But you see there the very, very strong return from, say, North America longer term. And that's in particular kind of driven by obviously what's called magnificent seven stocks, the large, largest stocks of North America. They're really driven the returns over the last few years. I was just briefly going to mention bonds and cash, because whilst we had some strong returns from equities, equity markets are very forward-looking and look longer term to kind of how they see kind of company profits. Perhaps the bond market is a bit more pessimistic where we are in particular, kind of gilts, which represent UK government bonds. We've seen some mixed returns shorter term and quite negative longer term. And the negative long-term returns, particularly from the longer-dated UK gilts, the 15 years, very much kind of picks up the big change in gilt yields we saw in late 2022. You'll recall obviously the the budget we had late 2022. There's significant concern from markets on the ability of UK government to meet future payments in terms of tax revenue and spending plans. And we saw the cost of government borrowing, so the gilt yields essentially rise quite substantially in late 2022. We've also seen some of that through this year, in particular, some of the long-dated yields have been rising. And that represents some investor concerns on, I guess, the fiscal position of the UK. UK has never defaulted on any of its kind of bond payments, but clearly, as there are more pressures on increased spending, for a number of reasons, not least defence and and health. Clearly, that needs to be offset and balanced the books through revenue coming in from taxation. So trying to balance the books is really the the concern that markets got longer term and how that will be achieved. So I've seen some mixed return from the bond market. I'd say that's very much driven by UK's fiscal position and requirement for borrowing. So I've covered quite a lot of area there in terms of markets. There's a bit, there's a few more comments in the actual text, but I wasn't going to go any further. I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions to the floor? If not, I, sorry.
It might come up later today, but some of the numbers that's come out this week. So public sector pay running over 5% or at 5%. CPI 3.8%, which feeds into deferred pensions. Do you think this is going to put extra pressure on the LGPS going forward and the revaluation? Or it might be something like, say, we need to pick up later?
Something to pick up later on, Joe, do you think, in terms of the revaluation?
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not covering the valuation today, so I'm happy to to take that question now. Obviously, the actuary makes their assumptions on inflation. I think the longer-term outlook, and they are looking longer term, they're not looking at where we are now. The longer-term outlook is still lower than it was three years ago when we did the valuation last. So I think there is still that expectation that rates will fall. Obviously, the the overall expected investment return, also known as the discount rate going forward, that's yet to be finalized. We have a meeting with the actuary, excuse me, on the 23rd of September, so next Tuesday, to look at the initial draft results. And then we'll be bringing that paper to the October Pensions Committee to discuss that and see what that final discount rate, that final expected future return is. But again, it's just worth remembering, this isn't about the next 12 months or even the next three years. When they're looking at inflation, when they're looking at discount rates, this is longer term, this is kind of 20 years. So short-term blips will will impact what we're actually doing. So absolutely, if inflation continues to rise, you remember, it was just a few years ago, we had 10%. That feeds through to actual pension payments being made, so that's the that's the concern. But the the long-term assumption is still, I think, that inflation will normalise back to perhaps the 2.5% or so. So yeah, that will be factored in with the valuation.
Thank you. Councillor Roberts?
Hi. How did the extremely high government bond rates, the worst, I think it's been since for 27 years, long-term bond gilts affect the actual pension fund? And does that affect your choice of investments moving forward? Thank you.
Probably a good point to pick up later on the agenda when we talk about the asset allocation to the to the scheme. But also when we think about setting the investment strategy, what elements we take on. So traditionally, kind of bonds have been quite useful as a diversifier. So, you know, equities should give you a strong long-term return, but we know they are quite volatile. So investing in bonds can can take out some of that volatility. But as you say, we've seen quite a lot of movement in in the bond market and particularly long-dated gilts. So I suggest we pick that up in the in the strategy session.
Councillor Brockway?
Thank you, Chair, Chairman. Just a quick question, if I may. You were talking about the rises and falls in the tech and the energy sector. Why would the energy sector have such a large drop? That's 10% this quarter. Is that seasonal or are there other factors?
A number of factors, but not least kind of oil price. So obviously, a lot of geopolitical kind of tension, and that kind of moves the oil price in particular.
Any further questions? If not, I have a couple. I don't know if you want to do this now, but what are the issues and current risks around China? Because we have investments in that through the emergent markets, but I see that they are very low.
China's probably been the best performing market this year. The, that's kind of despite some of the, perhaps the weak consumer demand in in China. You might recall the property real estate crash that happened within China. I think part of what's been driving the strong returns from China is kind of rotation of of assets. The US has performed very well for a prolonged period, and I think we've seen some rotation in capital markets. People taking money from US and putting it to China. And China's probably come from quite a low evaluation base. You'll you'll see that the longer-term emerging markets line there isn't as strong as some of the developed areas. So I think we're probably seeing a bit of tactical movement in assets, particularly from the US into China, representing kind of the low valuations.
Okay, thank you. The other question is around some of the comments that have been coming out in the press and from Richard Tice about fees for the pension schemes. Currently, sort of, we here are paying around about 0.1%. And, sorry, sorry, I apologise. Richard was saying that he would like to see them reduced to 0.1%. Currently, we are paying around about 0.4%. And Border to Coast as a whole is paying 0.5%. I know the overhead costs for even running the scheme are around about 0.08%. So I don't believe there's any way that we can get down to what Richard is suggesting. But is there a way that we could reduce costs?
We should definitely pick that up later on the agenda, because we we do use quite a lot of active management, which comes at a cost. It is possible to do it cheaper using index tracking and kind of passive funds. And what I'm showing on on the table here is essentially the index return. So you'd expect to get the index returns from such an index-tracking vehicle. Index tracking does come with risks. I said before, can the US is 70% of the current global equity market. So there can be some concentration risks. But I suggest we pick it up later on in the strategy, because this is more around kind of market conditions.
Thank you. That's all the question, sorry.
Sorry, could I just just add a little bit to that to provide a little bit more more context? It's useful to have the thing. But just just on the fees, just to explain how they have actually reduced already. So if we look back to 1718, the total investment management expenses, and this is not just pure manager fees, this covers transaction costs, this covers things like stamp duty, withholding tax, any transitional costs. So the fees are within that. But we were about 0.48% back in 1718. So that was when pooling was introduced. And our costs for those investment management expenses, taking out the 0.08 that covers the administration and the governance and oversight, were 0.32%. So there has already been quite a considerable reduction, which pooling has brought about. Even just the threat of pooling actually made managers sharpen their pencils and reduce the fees and create LGPS share classes, et cetera. So we have seen that steady reduction in fees. I think that our advisers would would agree that the LGPS is actually very competitive when compared to its global peers of similar sizes. I think as a whole, the LGPS manager expenses taken from the 2324 collation of the annual reports was about 0.5%. So at Lincolnshire, we are actually 10 basis points, 0.1% cheaper than the LGPS as an average. And I think just the other thing to mention on the passive, which again, we can discuss more and at the training session in November, is the the headline passive manager fees are cheap, but there is an increase then in the implicit costs. So the transaction costs, they will hold a lot more stocks, they will have to trade more regularly to stay aligned to that index. So there are, there are kind of two sides when you're looking. Manager fees are one, one part, that's the explicit cost, what what are they going to charge? But there's all the implicit costs costs underneath that of just them running the fund. So we can have that discussion at the training session in November, when the committee is looking at how it wants to set its strategic asset allocation. And Ian may well touch on that later this morning, but just to try and put a bit of context around those costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any other questions? Then I suggest we move on to stewardship update report.
Thank you very much. So the report today brings to the committee details of the fund's stewardship activity during the first quarter of the financial year. And the report has a recommendation that the committee consider the report and discuss the stewardship activity undertaken during the quarter. Through its stewardship activity, the fund wants to ensure that the investments that are being held are being well managed and are performing well. And to do this, we use a number of external professionals. This is a benefit to the fund through their specialist knowledge and allows us to have greater impact by approaching the market with others than if we took that action by ourselves. Paragraph 1.2 details the organisations who carry out stewardship activity on behalf of the fund. And as this is the first time you're seeing this report, I'll just take you through some of those organisations and the things that they do. The first of those is the Local Authority Pension Fund Forum, LAPF. And they represent the majority of LGPS funds in the UK and also the pooling companies. They engage with companies, regulators and policymakers, and they may act alone in collaboration or with other investors or through membership of other organisations. Annually, LAPF consult with their members to ensure that their work focuses on the areas where we've all got big holdings, so those largest holdings within our portfolio, and areas of concern or interest to its members. Border to Coast, as the fund's chosen pool, carries out active ownership over the assets that it manages on our behalf. And they work with Rabico to monitor companies, monitor external managers, vote at company AGMs and carry out engagement activity. We also expect our legacy managers to monitor and undertake stewardship activity. The largest of these is Morgan Stanley, who manage our private market portfolio. And they undertake their own stewardship work at the asset selection stage, but also throughout the time that they're holding assets. The report sets out activity undertaken by all of these above organisations during the period April to the 25th of June. Section two sets out the activity undertaken by LAPF during the quarter. Much of their work is ongoing engagements and stretches over numerous quarters. So it's often a build-on work that they've previously undertaken. In addition to the information in the report, LAPF publish a quarterly engagement report, and there is a link to that in the paper. Section three sets out Border to Coast stewardship arrangements and activity. And similar to LAPF, they publish a quarterly report on their on their website. During the quarter, they've also published their annual stewardship report and their climate change report, which is a regulatory requirement for them to comply with the Task Force on Climate-Related Financial Disclosures. And again, there are links in the report to the underlying documents if members of the committee want to view those. Section four covers the work of Rabico, who undertake voting and engagement services for Border to Coast. And then section five covers the activity of those other managers. And this month, this includes an update from Morgan Stanley and from Royal London, who manage one of our UK commercial property funds. I won't run through the information in detail, but I'm very happy to take any questions on the work that those organisations have undertaken.
Does anyone have any questions? Councillor Brockway?
Thank you. I think it's really good that you're doing such extensive stewardship and checks. I have a question on section two, the last bullet point about water scarcity. I noticed that you've engaged extensively with Glencore and that they are putting in place onsite site-specific assessments. And that's really good, but I'd be interested to know the next level of information. They put the assessments in, but what action are they actually taking to make sure that they don't draw out too much, too much water out of a specific location? Thank you.
I think we can probably come back to you with some more information on what LAPF have been doing in in terms of that particular engagement. They've done an awful lot of work, not just with Glencore, but with other mining sector in terms of water scarcity. So we can bring you some more information on that.
Okay, then I have some questions. Are the LAPFF and Rabico looking at any companies within China or relationship to China? Or are they unable to do that research?
So the the work both of Rabico and of LAPF focuses on some of the largest areas of holdings that we've got. I think almost any company that is making anything in the world will probably have some supply chain in China. LAPF have picked up work looking at forced labour with Uighur populations previously. And they will engage with companies who across their supply chain issues as part of their work. So we can bring back to the committee some specific examples of of work that has been done either with forced labour or with companies who have got supply chain in China.
I'd appreciate that. Secondly, just a general one, I don't expect you to have it to hand, but how many legacy fund managers do we currently have for LCC? And can I have a list of them?
Yeah, you can. The number's really quite small now. So Morgan Stanley in the private market space. In terms, the other two large areas that we've got legacy managers are property, where we have seven underlying managers, and we've got the property paper later on the agenda. And then infrastructure, where we've got five managers. They are primarily, well, within the infrastructure and some of the property, they're closed-ended. So those schemes will remain ours until the assets run off. So they've got time horizons probably between seven and 15 years. In terms of property, we've got three unit trusts which are open-ended. So we would plan to dispose of those and reinvest that cash into the Border to Coast UK and global real estate offerings as and when they're able to take more monies from us.
I think that sort of answers part of the sort of next question, but I'll still go ahead. Is it, do we have a timeline for when the legacy fund managers' assets will be completely transferred over to Border Coast, not just managed by them?
So yeah, that oversight will happen from next year. And the the pool will be giving advice on the runoff of those assets. In terms of the closed-ended schemes, unless there are particularly good opportunities in the secondary market, I think we would expect them to run to term, so we wouldn't do any early disposal. We wouldn't sell those assets in advance of them coming to maturity. In terms of the UK commercial property funds, it will be when Border to Coast can take cash into their own offerings. And that obviously requires them to find properties that are worthy of being within that fund. So I would anticipate that it will be a long time for us to get them. We've held some of those investments for a very long time. To come out of them will take time as well.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions?
I've paused after the engagement session. I've got a little bit more on the report, if that's all right. So section six looks at the voting activity for the quarter for all the Border to Coast equity sub-funds. And as an active owner of shares, the fund expects Border to Coast to vote at company AGMs. April to June is that peak AGM season, and the quarter has seen Border to Coast voting at just under 700 meetings, covering just under 10.5000 agenda items. And they don't always vote with management. And in 13% of meetings, Border to Coast have cast at least one vote against the recommendations of managers. And further information on voting can be found at appendix A to C. And there's more information on the Border to Coast website. Section seven covers the quarterly environmental, social and governance and carbon reporting on the Border to Coast Equity and Fixed Income Subfunds. And again, the detail of this is attached at appendix D to H. And again, the detail of this is attached at appendix D to H in the, to the paper. The final section of the report, section eight, covers the stewardship code. The fund has been a signatory of the new stewardship code since its inception in 2020, 2021, and will make a submission for this year very shortly, and this will be brought back to committee in December. The section of the report also highlights the changes to the stewardship code regime that will be in place from 2526. And I'm happy to take any more questions on the paper.
Well, I have none, but I don't know if anybody else has. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item six now. Okay, I move that under section 100A of the Local Government Act 1972. The president publicly excluded from the meeting for the following agenda item on the grounds that it is considered to be contained exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act as amended. Take a vote on this? All in favour? Any against? Any abstain? Thank you. We'll just wait a few minutes until the chamber's cleared.